He just turned it on.
Hey, these seats are fantastic.
I know, I like them.
I know, I want to.
Yeah.
That's gonna float on top.
It is. That's the new style. New, it's like a whole, like a swing store. That's all there was. I couldn't find anything that I wanted to, or something I didn't want. And just made do. No, whatever.
Yeah, they won't either.
Nope.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. If I wouldn't do it, I'm seven. That's what the council approved was, that.
And did you see this?
This one.
I swear, it's been one of those days.
Oh, yeah.
The whole thing is coming apart.
You got that one packed.
I do. I've got too much in it, I just realized it. Yeah, it'll be alright. I've got it divided here. I'll just leave some of them out.
Yep.
Right, right. And if, well, if one votes no, it gets in the dance. So, that's all it takes.
But, but that's, that's to advance. And once it's advanced, it gets.
Then it's majority, yeah.
That's what I thought.
But if you wanna stop, one no vote, stop it. And you'll have to come back and do another meeting, or it can't be.
That's what's sent you this.
Yeah, one no vote, on the first read, when you first read it. If you don't wanna advance it.
Yeah, I got seven oh one in the clocks, the clocks double. One minute, four seven, so I don't know, you go where you wanna go. Are we, are we, just talk to the attorney and find out what's the official clock?
Okay.
The attorney says whatever the mayor says at seven o'clock.
Alright, we're gonna get started. Jacobs.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Alright, roll call.
Done?
I'm so sorry. I don't know why I was stuck on that. I'm so sorry. Approval of minutes.
Move to approve.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adoption of the agenda?
Moves to adopt.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Okay, the inclusive playground. I get to stand up and go right there, right? Yeah? Who do I get to give some money?
Scott's back there.
No, I want it.
You're not gonna be able to go through the drive-thru, I'm sorry.
So, before we do this, though, it just can't be me. So, everybody in this room that's participated, why don't you come on up front? That's a lot of you. Come on. Danielle, you have Brian. Come on. Oh, come on. If I can wear my hair like this, you can look like. I always gotta.
I'm, I'm in the picture. We're in the picture, we're good. We'll slide over and take the pictures, stand behind.
You go, you go.
I'm sorry.
Hi, guys. Chop your hair off.
So, I suppose this is why I was a bit distracted a minute ago. I was trying to think of the right words to say, because truly, there are no right words to say on how incredible this is, what you guys have done for the inclusive park, everyone. And it's the biggest thing I've seen, since I've lived in Warrensburg, twelve years now, to see the community really bind together, and to go do something truly amazing that's gonna impact people for so long. And little people, you know, children, and adults, and grandparents, and it's just, I'm so honored to do this on behalf of city council, and the city staff, and even our citizens of Warrensburg, that we got to make this decision, was truly an honor. So. You're smiling.
This is my hat.
So, congratulations on everything.
Thank you. I always have to talk about a couple things. So, first off, thank you Danielle and Parks Department, and everybody on. If you do notice that the colors of this park, I did insert one thing, I take pride in. They happen to be the purple, blue, and green that you see on my arm, and it matches her eyes. So, that's by purpose. And then, a lot of the kids I've talked to, and I've looked at the picturing stuff, have started calling this the purple park. So, that's what I want to designate it as. And so, that's all I ask, is to be able to play on it and enjoy it. So, thank everybody for participating. I did pick the colors.
Alright, and so, this is for you to take to the bank. Okay, and Danielle, can you, one more time? This is another really neat one, because Parks and Rec was like the first place I went to when I came to Warrensburg. Okay, so we have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. You have to get real close to this. Alright. Whereas, parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including Warrensburg, Missouri, and whereas, our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas, parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas, parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, parks and recreation are a fundamental to the environment well-being of our community. And whereas, parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas, the US House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas, Warrensburg, Missouri recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, dated this ninth day of July, 2018. Alright, thank you.
Before it goes off, scares Brian.
It would, too.
You'd be trying to turn it off.
Yeah, like, whose phone's that? Yeah, I should check and make sure mine's off, too.
Okay, up next, we have a public hearing. We will open the public hearing on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a single-family house in the Central Business District at 118 West Gay Street.
Madam Mayor and City Council, we just had a Planning and Zoning Commission on this as well, and I wanna pass out their findings and recommendations, so that you have that, and it's not in your packet like normal, because they just completed their meeting. This is a request at 118 West Gay Street to have a single-family house conditional use permit issued. Currently, there is a single-family house at that location, it's been there for decades, decades. And it is in the Central Business District. The Central Business District has been established at that point with those boundaries since at least 1992. And the zoning ordinance that was also adopted in 1992 made a single-family house a conditional use permit in a, in a central business district. So, some things are allowed by right. There's a Z in the table of uses, if that's the case. Some things are not allowed at all in certain zoning districts, and in that case, the table of uses has a blank spot in that use and district. And in other cases, uses can be allowed by a conditional use permit, the process which you're going through this evening. Where the people in 1992 on council felt that it was necessary to look at each thing on a case-by-case basis, and determine what the, the neighborhood at that time, how it would be impacted by the specific request in front of them. So, it might sometimes make sense to have a single-family house, other times, other, it might not. And so, that's why a conditional use permit is required. The other thing it did in 1992 was all the existing houses that were in the boundary of the Central Business District at that time in 1992 were brought in as legal-conforming uses. So, those houses that existed on that day are not a problem. They are not what we're here about this evening, including the house that's at 118 West Gay Street today. It is fine, the way it is, because it was that way in 1992. The issue is that if it is destroyed for any reason, whether that is neglect, and time, or tornado, or fire, or for whatever reason, it's destroyed such that the cost of repairs is in excess of seventy-five percent of the fair market value immediately prior to sustaining the damage, then it can only rebuild, or a new structure, new single-family house be built if a conditional use permit is in place for that property, and what they are specifically asking to do. So, the, with the request that you have in front of you this evening is because the owner of the house now is trying to sell the house, and the person he wants to sell the house to wants to finance it with the VA loan. And the VA loan is requiring a rebuild letter from the city, guaranteeing him the right to build in the future a single-family house, with no questions attached. It's just allowed. So, the city staff can't write that letter, because we don't know if a conditional use permit has been granted, or would be granted. He's asked that it be granted today for a house he might need to build in the future. Staff has recommended against it, because we don't know when or if that will ever come to pass, and if it did come to pass, what that neighborhood would look like at that time. He's also not supplied a site plan which would tell us exactly what he would build in the future. We have a site plan of what's there today, and we could tell you that if he built exactly what's there today, it would not meet today's code. And I don't know what the future code would look like. So, I can't tell you if even today's thing would meet future code. So, in your staff report, you have a list of the reasons why staff has recommended against it. It is not, in keeping with your 2017 future land use map, the future land use map, there's copy in your packet, shows this area of mixed use. And that would be defined as something that includes land that developed at a higher urban density with multi-story buildings, including a combination of residential, retail, and office uses, where you have a mixture of those uses in one building. That is not the case here, where you would have just a single-family house. It's not in keeping with the intent of Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances for the specific Central Business District, Section 27-117B, which states the Central Business District is designed to allow major business services and a broad range of retail merchandising to coexist with high-density residential development. And it goes on as it's enumerated there in your staff report. Again, we would recommend against it, because we don't know what future code requirements would be, or what that development pattern will be at the time of rebuild. It might be true. If, if something horrible were to happen one year from now, and he was in here asking to rebuild one year from now, the neighborhood may not have changed much. It might be appropriate at that time, but I can't know that today. Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this a little over an hour ago. There was a good discussion amongst the commission members themselves. The applicant did have a representative here, the future owner. He stated he would answer questions. He, I don't think he provided much additional comment. The commissioners had a discussion about what other financing might be available that would not require such a loan, such as conventional financing, that in the past has allowed people to purchase homes in the Central Business District without a conditional use permit and a rebuild letter. That a conditional use permit would run with the land for all of time, and any future owner could benefit from it as well. What other houses are in the area, and if any of them had a conditional use permit, and, and the uncertainty about what it might look like in thirty years, and that the market might take care of it at that time as well. If it had changed over to a purely retail environment, then someone would offer this person enough money to make it worth their while to do retail as opposed to a house. And you have a copy of their findings. They did recommend against issuing the conditional use permit. With that as their recommendation, it would take, the code does require a four-fifths majority of your body to then approve a conditional use permit.
So, it sounds like all these houses in this area, that are in this commercial area, are in this situation where none of those houses could ever be sold as a VA house?
If the VA requires a rebuild letter, that is true. I, I know of one instance in the past where a person did lose the property because they didn't get a VA loan for the same reason. I know of one, one letter I've written for a single-family in the Central Business that was conventional financing, where we said you have the option of applying for a conditional use permit in the future, and that was enough for that financing to go through. Typically, we don't even write that letter, because the appraiser in their report states that it's a conditional use, and you can apply for that in the future, and that suffices for the lender.
It's sort of a strange requirement from a legal standpoint, because any property that is subject to a VA loan could be rezoned. And the residential structure that's on it could become non-conforming during the term of that loan. So, for them to pick this situation to say, "We want a guarantee," is odd.
Do you think that's a federal thing?
Well, see, I'm wondering if it's, see, I mean, I, and I don't have any, I have no knowledge of this deal in any way, shape, or form. I'm just wondering if this is not the bank's investor requesting this, and not the VA, and it's being brought to us as it's the VA. And that's why, when the kid left, I kinda wanted to say, wait, stop for a minute. Hang tight. You may learn something here in a minute, so.
I agree, 'cause there's a lot of houses that.
Right, 'cause I mean, what, what I'm hearing, that's, it scares me, because there's several houses that are in this situation that can no longer go VA. And as, as Danielle said, I agree that if you are eligible to use a VA loan, I would.
I have not spoken to the VA.
Right. And as I'm saying, and the chances of, of me or you being able to get to the VA for this conversation is slim, but the, the bank, who's the investor, can get to that person pretty easily for that conversation.
I guess my concern is, I expressed it during the planning and zoning meeting, is that the letter legally binds that property forever. It's not just for the term of the loan, or just as long as that individual owns it. It's forever binding. And it's legally binding, I guess. It's not a precedent, it's legally binding.
And I don't, and I don't like that piece, either. I mean, I'm just, I, I'm concerned that we're gonna have a bunch of houses out there that are no longer VA-eligible. You know, if that's the VA.
Sounds like that's exactly what it would be.
If that's the VA truly enforcing this, I mean, it, this could be a deal where they're using an internet bank who doesn't know a lot of that stuff. And that's why I kinda, I may drive by there and see if there's a sign out there and say, hey, this might, you might be able to help me by moving to a local bank, if that's the case, you know.
But you said this has happened in the past, and you gave them a letter.
On the.
Sorry, you said that in Planning and Zoning Meeting, that this has happened in the past, and that you gave a letter saying that at what point something were to happen.
He did not apply for a conditional use permit on that other case. I was aware that it was a VA loan. And, and he said without the, without the CUP, he would lose the financing. But he did not make application.
So, everything in purple in this picture is zoned commercial, correct?
Yes. This is on Central Business, yes.
What I'm, what I'm kinda concerned, like Brian was talking, if, let's say, somebody, you've got a buyer, and they bought it, and they went through VA, it could go VA. So, it depends where he's getting his financing, 'cause I really, I'm, I've done real estate enough time that VA's not gonna be always not letting that property go, you think?
That's a possibility. That's, that's a possibility. I mean, that's what I'm saying, is I'd be interested to know if this is, 'cause if this is the bank, that's, if it's the bank and the investor, well, you find another bank, you find another investor, and it's not VA. If it's truly VA, then that scares me, because I'm looking at this purple picture, and I see a lot of houses. Now, a lot of those houses in this wouldn't go VA, do the condition anyways, but at the same time, it's kinda scary that we might have a chunk of houses that aren't gonna go VA, with about ninety percent of our buyers VA.
The other part of this that we discussed in Planning and Zoning is that the, I think you said duplex right across the street.
There's a duplex north of this property on the north side of Holon Street, that was issued a conditional use permit, I'm gonna say, for sure within the last five years, I think maybe in three years.
I mean, and I think I was on the council at the time she won that conditional, it was my first year.
So, even if everything else changes, that.
That would still have a conditional use permit for a duplex on it, yes.
And that, well, no matter, it's five years ago. So, that's why that was ever, why that was issued, but that was five years ago, so.
It, it could have been sooner. It, it maybe.
At the most.
Yeah.
Well, it had to have been at least four, because I've been on the council before, and I don't remember it, but as soon as we, it didn't happen.
It was my first year on the council, 'cause I tabled to the next meeting.
That's a tough one, you two.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There were no other, no signups, so. Okay, so we will close that public hearing and open the next one. Okay, the next public hearing, thank you, is a public hearing on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land use. 1.320 multifamily townhouse, row houses, land use 1.330 multifamily apartments, street level and land use 1.340 multifamily attached units. Street level in a CB Central Business District located at 146 West Pine Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Again, this is the written findings and recommendation from the Planning Commission, from their meeting immediately prior to this. It's not in your packet like normal, because they just completed that. So, there's a copy for you there. This is a request at 146 West Pine Street for street-level residential use. There are three different land use codes, 1.320, 1.330, and 1.340, enumerated in the title, as well as in your ordinance. Because staff has not received any type of site plan or building construction plans, so I couldn't tell you exactly which land use category the request will fall under. There are very minor differences before, between these three, and they're all for street-level residential. So, I do feel it will fall into one of these three if he makes application. The proposal is for a, what he's written and submitted is for two-story units, so that he's called out for three condo-style use. Each unit would have a first-floor space and a second-floor space. That, if that stayed, what the plans were that he would turn in, that would be land use 1.320 multifamily townhouse, row houses with street level. So, your current ordinance was adopted in this respect for this land use, street level piece of it, was adopted in 2011. North of this project on the north side of Pine Street is a project that was developed in 2005 and 2006, also by the same owners, well, now owned by the same owners. And in response to that project, that project was allowed by right, zoned by right. Street-level residential is a primary use, street-level, second, third floor, whatever, was a primary use, was allowed by right in the Central Business District at that time. And so, they came in and got a building permit, and were off to the races. Following that project, and through a discussion with the your 2007 Comprehensive City Plan Process, the Dream Initiative in 2010, and then your subsequent 2017 Comprehensive City Plan Update, which your future land use map references and comes out of, all of those discussions included a discussion about what we wanted our Central Business District to be, and preserving that as a area for commerce and business, be that office, service uses, restaurant, retail, what have you. And that residential was a piece of that, and an important piece of that, but it was as part of a mixed-use building, and on a second and higher floor, that it be allowed by right. That at the street level, we wanted to preserve that for commerce. And so, if you look at the Central Business District intent, in your zoning ordinance, Section 27-117B, it states all of that right there in that statement of intent, and that's in your, in your packet. I quoted a little of it earlier. To continue, residential uses are permitted under conditional use permits as principal units. Uses on individual lots and at street level of mixed-use occupancies. Residential uses are zoned by right in basements, and on the second and higher floors of mixed-use occupancies. Generally, first-floor occupancy should be non-residential in this district, especially when surrounding uses include commercial activity. So, your code is different now than it was in 2005 when that other project was built. Now, it requires this process of a conditional use permit. Hearing and consideration that you're having this evening. For the project specifically, if you were to consider granting, and staff has recommended against granting the conditional use permit, and Planning and Zoning recommended against granting the conditional use permit as well. Staff does have some concerns with items, because we don't have a site plan such as the balconies on the west side of the building that would have to extend into the city's right-of-way, and typically, we don't allow things to occupy the city's right-of-way. He did, the applicant did state in the P&amp;Z meeting, they would consider removing those. He did, the applicant did state in the P&amp;Z meeting, they would consider removing those if that was an issue. Things like the dumpster enclosure location, air handling units, those have been issues on the other project. We would need to see how they're being handled on this project, if there's room to accommodate them before, on the property without extending into the alley. And also, parking is a concern. So three or fewer units in the central business district does not require parking, and I believe that's why he has set his project at three units. That being said, whether that unit has one bedroom or five bedrooms, the code doesn't matter. So those could be five, six, ten unit, ten-bedroom units, and still have no parking required if the conditional use permit is granted. So certainly, we would want to see a site plan and bring that back before this body on Planning Commission if the conditional use permit is considered to be issued. Staff has recommended against it for the reasons stated in the site, in the staff report. It's not in keeping with intent of the central business district. It is not in keeping with the general trend of development in that area. The request is not in keeping with the 2017 future land use map from the comprehensive city plan update, which calls for mixed use. This is a single-use building as residential as he's proposed, not in keeping with the recommendations of the 2007 comprehensive city plan, and, and not having a site plan or building plans at this time. There was a lot of discussion at the commission meeting, a lot of public comment was received. I, I will try to summarize that. Nothing else I can tell you who spoke, and if they were for or against it. The applicant appeared, obviously, he was for it. He's had a lot of comments that he added in terms of having invested four million in the city, stated there was nothing on that end of the downtown, and none of the businesses would work there. Residential was his only option. There's plenty of empty space on Holden Street for businesses to be in if they want to be somewhere. He was looking at four-bedroom units, so twelve people, and if they have friends, there could be thirty or forty new people downtown to shop at the other businesses. That would be a good thing. Crystal Ryman spoke with Main Street, she is in favor, and I think she's here, she'll speak in a minute, in favor of residential downtown on second or higher floors, just not on the first floor. Is against the first-floor residential request. Jason Elkins appeared, he was opposed to the request in favor residential above, but not on the first floor. Tina Simons was concerned about parking and not wanting residential on the first floor, and Anne Papasafikis, who owns Curly, what was known as Curly Copy Center, now owns that buil, business and has worked downtown for seventeen years, is concerned about parking, that the customers and the, the tenants of the building on the north side don't park in the designated parking spots in the parking lot, they park on the street, which takes customers away from her other businesses during the daytime where they can park for the businesses. All stars has shown that there is, can be successful businesses on the west end of Pine Street. People do window shop, and this would take away that opportunity. It hurts the character of downtown, and it's not a good fit of who we downtown are today. I think that summarizes the public comment. Be happy to answer any questions.
We do have a couple people signed up. First is Rhonda Gebach.
I certainly can understand someone wanting to, he's got a four-million-dollar investment in Warrensburg, and I appreciate the investment that he put in our community, and I certainly can appreciate wanting to get some return on that. I too welcome more residential in the downtown and central district. I think it's good for our retailers. But I feel like if you take away retail on the first level, it hurts all the retailers down there, because it needs to be walkable. And the more retail that we take off the first floor, you wanna park, and you wanna stroll, and you wanna be able to shop in several different places. So you turn that into residential, and you stop that. You've also stopped your sales tax, and we need more sales tax. I just feel like it doesn't fit the national model that we have for downtown and with the National Main Street, and I feel like it would be a step in the wrong direction being residential on the first floor again. It hasn't helped us so far.
Thank you. Brandy, how do you say your last name?
Sure, sure.
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 Got it, sorry about that.
Okay, first, I'm not a resident of Warrensburg, was, haven't. I came to the downtown in 1989 to 2015. I've seen a lot on Pine Street, a lot of change. Debbie Arwood would tell you, when she opened this and that on Holden Street, that her first Saturday, she watched papers blow across the street, because there was nothing going on. There was no cars, not one car, except for a paper going across the street. Basically the same way on Pine Street. There were a lot of empty buildings. It has changed a lot, it has become very vibrant downtown. I think you have some business owners that are conscientious, and I think you then have some that aren't. I think these already own enough property that the proof is in the pudding. They don't take care of them, they don't do the right things with their property to make it a better part of the downtown. That's an opinion, but I think the proof is right there. I think, I, I didn't realize that, that the ordinance did change in 2015, that they did address that, because I think that one kinda slipped under where they did do it on the north side. But all you have to do is watch, any event that goes on downtown, that Main Street puts on or anybody, the residents coming in and out of there is kind of a problem. You don't know what, what they're doing, or where they're going with what they're going with when you're trying to control that part of the street. So one bad is okay, it happened, but two wrongs won't make a right. This is a bad... Take care of what they've got, they've gotta keep, you've gotta keep retail on the main, main floor, I mean, at the ground level. Do whatever you want on the bottom. I mean, even lawyers, and the, the Main Street model says nothing on first floor. No lawyers, no anything that is office, it is all retail. But, you've got that, and it works here. So, but I think putting residential on the, on the first level is a wrong move for this council or any council. With that said, I, I, like I said, from 1987 is gonna open the business in Warrensburg, came to the street in 89, left it in 2015. Possibly would like to come back, but not under those circumstances, because that's just... It sends a wrong signal to anybody that does wanna put something in, in my good... Thank you.
Thank you. And Papasafikis?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that speaks volumes as well.
Thank you.
As Barb said, I started working in downtown Warrensburg seventeen years ago, I'll be eighteen in December. Came to college here in 1994, and never really left. I love the town, I believe in the town. I believe in our downtown how it is. Those of us who have been downtown this long, we all joke that we're our own dysfunctional family. When Randy had a store right next door to mine, if he was having problems with something, I would help him, he would help me. It's the same thing. People need stuff framed, but they need copies of it first, so they bring it to me and I walk it down to the frame shop. If you let, take away the retail on the first thing, you will remove that type of kinship that we have, to where we're really helping our customers out, and they see it as one more nice thing about the people of Warrensburg, because there aren't very many communities left that would be like, oh, I'll just take this down so you can finish the next step of it, so you don't have to drive down here and take it two doors down. The downtown now works. Yeah, Pine Street has some holes in it, but they'll get better. Because when I started working downtown, Holden Street had holes all over it, and it was a mess. And it just, a little bit of time takes care of everything. My other thing is, as Randy said, they already own a lot of Pine Street, and they don't do a good job with it, and they don't care about their neighbors. The other morning I came to work, and their contractors took up ten parking spots on Pine Street in addition to the ones that they already had roped off. So obviously, they don't care about anybody but themselves, and that's not who our downtown is.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, I didn't have fun.
You had your own soundtrack.
I, I need to apologize for laughing, I was not laughing.
Oh, it's all good.
Okay.
It's all good, I didn't get warmed up about much.
All right, we will close that public hearing, and we will open the last one. A public hearing on an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Missouri Route 13 Highway and Veterans Road.
So for the last...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, for the last nine to ten months, we've been working to this moment. So, you have annexed many properties in this area, making the Dollar Tree site now contiguous to the city. The city actually owns that property as a function of the Chapter 100 bonds that have been issued, and so the city has petition, petitioned the city to have it annexed. The, with the improvements being completed to both the, the building, the facility, as well as the infrastructure in the street, Veterans Road into it, the development agreement now calls for it to be annexed into the city. And so, with it being contiguous, we've put that in front of you for the public hearing this evening and a first reading of the ordinance. We had a couple phone calls concerning the zoning of it as light industrial. They weren't specific to the annexation itself. The questions were mainly confused, because it said the city was applying to have it zoned, and they thought Dollar Tree owned it, so they just wanted to verify it was the same 120-acre site. So they were calling to see what the request was, not to, to speak for or against, against the request. That was from Steve, Steve Lyle at 351 Northeast 200 Road, and from Mike Ridge, one of the partners with Baldridge, which is doing the Cahill subdivision development, has property on the west side of Highway 13 in HH. The staff has recommended approval for the reasons stated in the staff report. Would be happy to answer any questions that is consistent with your future land use map from your 2017 comprehensive city plan, which calls this area out for a business and industrial park. The second reading will need to happen at the next council meeting, after the fourteen-day comment period from the state has passed. Planning, okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission does not make a recommendation on annexations, but they do make recommendations on, on the zoning designation. So at their meeting just prior to this, they did recommend approval of the Light Industrial District, which will be on your July 23rd council if annexation is successful.
Question on Stephen Love, because that's one of the houses I manage. Will that be light industrial, like if he tried to sell it or something?
Steve Love, Stephen...
The 200 Northeast HH is what I manage, and he's on the call too about it.
His property is not changing.
Okay, his property will...
His property is not part of this. Only the Dollar Tree site is being annexed and zoned. Yeah, yeah, it, his, nothing, his property is not being annexed, it is not being zoned. This request is just about the Dollar Tree site. He got noticed because he was in, within 300 feet.
That's what I told you, okay.
Yeah.
I got several questions as well about annexation, but I am fairly certain they were all in relation to where you could shoot off fireworks.
Oh.
So, people just wanted to know if it was annexed in yet, for that reason, so...
Good to know.
I foresee that being a question every year.
I wonder if that's why I was getting all those text messages from people I know over there.
It is.
Actually, I think that they're gonna be bained anyway, maybe not my time, but maybe my grandkids' time, I think, just because of all the danger of fireworks, I'm a pyro level.
Life is dangerous, you gotta do something.
I know, right?
It is.
Yeah, but those lanterns, those are dangerous. That's not a firework, but anyway, they're dangerous.
All right, so we will close that public hearing. Next, we have an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Missouri Route 13 Highway and Veterans Road.
This is for first reading only.
Next, we have first and second reading. Ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land 1.111 site build, single-family detached dwelling in a CB central business district located at 118 West Gay Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Staff would recommend not approving the ordinance. Planning and zoning commission has recommended denying the conditional use permit as well, and because of that, it would trigger a forfeits vote of your body to approve it.
I move that, that bill goes to second reading, I don't...
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land use 1.111 site build, single-family detached dwelling in a CB central business district located at 118 West Gay Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
No.
Lund?
No.
Watts?
No.
Allen?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land use 1.320 multifamily townhouse, row houses, land use 1.330 multifamily apartments, street level and land use 1.340 multifamily attached units, street level in a CB central business district located at 146 West Pine Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Just had a hearing on this one as well. Staff has recommended against the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended against the conditional use permit as well at their meeting, and for that reason, it would trigger a forfeits majority from your body as well, if you wish to approve it.
And there was a, there was a statement made, the developer was not here, the developer was at the planning and zoning meeting and then left, so, but he was, he was at the planning and zoning meeting.
Yes.
So, right, I just wanted to clear that up, so... I knew that you were... Yeah. But thank you.
Yep. I move that bill, we move second reading back on.
Jacobs?
Yes, I'm sorry. Getting my words mixed up there, yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land use 1.320 multifamily townhouse, row houses, land use 1.330 multifamily apartments, street level and land use 1.340 multifamily attached units, street level in a CB central business district located at 146 West Pine Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
No.
Lund?
No.
Watts?
No.
Allen?
No.
Johnston?
No.
Next, we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Mega Industries Corporation for the downtown revitalization project, phase four in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Hello, Mayor, Governor, City Council, this is a long-awaited project that we've tried to get accomplished over several years. Phase four encompasses Holden Street from Grover to South Street. Partial funding for this project will be through some MOGA... Partial funding for this project will be through some MoDOT STB funding, which requires that it, that money is used this year for the project. Staff opened bids on May 30th. We received three bids. Two of the bids were rejected as being non-responsive for a couple of reasons. Mega Industries was the final successful bidder. We provided all the documentation to MoDOT for this project. MoDOT reviewed Mega Industries information and bids, quantities, went through the project and gave the current award to the city for the project. We received that on the June 29th. The project amount in entirety will be $561,593.40. $229,397.75 will be the caution for the city with MoDOT picking up the other portion of Staff is asking that the city council approve the contracts that we moved forward with the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
So this takes us up to the line on South Street?
Yes, it does. The project originally had plans to improve the intersection up there with the university being involved with part of the project, but since the university had a reduction in funding, they opted out of it. We will terminate project access.
But it could be something in the future.
It could be. We do have plans on file. It could be done in the future.
We really only had one true bid because the other ones were non-responsive.
That's correct. We, like I said, there's a couple of different reasons, but I don't fully go through them and we need to... They were basically because of the MoDOT guidelines, they were being non-responsive. And in fact, at this time of year, been the project with all the contractors and having all their work, we did not get the number of bids we'd like to add on this project. Pretty much we wanted or need to go on with the project.
I'm not familiar with Mega, but MoDOT did, they had gone through their vetting process before they...
They have, Mega is out of, I believe, the North Canton City area. Any information were requested, paperwork on their office side of, at Point Center. They knew what they were doing there. MoDOT is familiar with them and is familiar with some of the work they've done.
Okay.
I move this said bill goes to second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Mega Industries Corporation for the downtown revitalization project phase five, phase four, excuse me, in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Warrensburg R6 School District for the resource, school resource officer program for the 2018-2019 school year.
Mayor, members of the city council, this is a renewal of an agreement that we had with the school district this past school year. There were no changes to the agreement for next year, so we are requesting approval.
Is that something, just because I guess the funding of it, or it's something, obviously I would hate to think that any of us would not want that.
I think where it is, it's something that has to be approved every year because it's their funding. So we're the same way, we have to approve funding for things each year. And so it's, what happens, I ship it order them, their board approves it, they send it back and you guys approve it.
Like I said, I'd hate to see somebody say no, but...
Just for the council's information, the city of Higginsville was interested in the format of the agreement here in Warrensburg and that solved some problems for them that they were dealing with. They have mentioned this and it's been successful there as well and now likes to be looking at the same model.
That's great.
Warrensburg's program has been an example, has been led to by several surrounding communities.
And we, three or four we have on staff now?
We have three slotted. This past year we only had two filled. We were short-staffed for a lot of the year. But I can tell you, just being up there with the SROs when different things are going on, the rapport with the students is stuff that you just can't pay money for. It doesn't matter how much it costs, it's a program that's very valuable. It builds a relationship with the officers and the students that we can't get anywhere else. And you all have heard me talking about it since I came here, it's building positive relationships with people that aren't related to cause for police service. And that's what we have to do to build trust in our community and this does that with a group that we really, we don't interact with that much.
So I guess with my question for future, once I go off the council, for future councils, is it something that you could just do or you do have to do council every year?
I think it's the financial part that requires us to renew it every year on our side and theirs.
Okay. That must be an amount of money that we have to...
Yeah, we can't commit funds to a previous, to a future year.
I would just hate to lose that.
I would, this would be one of those ones that you would want to fight for.
Yeah. We don't know future councils, so we don't know what they're...
My youngest actually rushes to get out of the car to go get her high five.
Yeah.
That's pretty neat.
I move said bill, move to second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Warrensburg R6 School District for the school resource officer program for the 2018-2019 school year. This is for adoption rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, next we have a request for funding from the Stevenson Fund for the teachers' warehouse.
Did anybody have any information about it in their packet? I don't think I got included.
I don't have anything.
So I'll just tell you what I know and then if you all want me to submit it. They request $500 from the Stevenson Fund every year and they have a warehouse out by our woods and they let the teachers go and get the supplies. I think it's a very good program. But anyway, Rhonda posed in charge of it and she made the request.
She does need to move to approve. Yep, I'll move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, we have appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. No, okay, thank you. All right, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council. For mayoral appointments, I do want to put Dwayne Jackson as the head of the traffic commission. That's, we did the majority of those appointments last time, so that's just a modification there.
Somebody want to move?
I move to approve. Anything we can get Dwayne to do is good.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Did we get the park board situation squared away now or are we still working that?
I think, go ahead.
The letter was sent and I think she understands that having it below the city limits. So we do have two openings. So, and you have to live in city limits, so if you know of anybody interested.
And then WCVB, are you good on WCVB?
Uh, yes, actually.
Good, okay, good.
And then is that something we can put as far as park board members out on Parks and Rec page?
Yeah.
That you are looking for board members and link to the application maybe?
Yeah.
We have pretty good followership on that page.
I believe Suzanne was going to put something on the chamber page, wasn't she Marcy?
Yeah.
Well, she put it in the chamber flash.
Did she put it in the chamber? And I could put something on the radio station. They're really good about...
I think tomorrow's second Tuesday. Right? So yeah, I can say something about it as well?
Okay. Obviously say city limits, because people don't really realize it.
Right. Okay, very good. City managers' report.
He had nothing to add to what he's told me, he said, it was very little already written.
Thank you. Matthew, we have director of finance report.
Yes, we, I do have one thing I wanted to give out today. We had our 2019 budget cover photo contest and we had a winner. His name is Mishna Thompson.
He's in the back.
Yeah, he's back there.
A prize basket too.
That's cool.
Do I have his picture?
Oh, yeah.
On the website?
Pictures in, yeah, the...
Did you submit a bunch of them? Because you had a bunch of them you took that were really good.
Yeah, I did, a couple.
Yeah.
So that, that's the...
That's the one that won.
Cool.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We had a slightly down month, two months to go, 29% sales tax, but overall we're still at 22% over last year, which is much of a surprise because last year was down so much.
Barb, anything extra?
Nothing additional.
Lund? Mary?
Nothing additional.
Danielle? Joe?
I'll break the cycle. Barbara will be interested in this also. We're notified from the manufacturer, this self-dead breathing apparatus should be here tomorrow. We'll train on them next week and put them in service quickly after that, or one will fail rapidly. Tomorrow evening, I believe you got a notification and it's been out on Facebook, the second pumper is in. We had it out front here tonight. It'll be tomorrow night. It goes in service at eight o'clock tomorrow morning. Tomorrow night we'll have a formal ceremony in Station Two, more or less christening it in under some old traditional ways. And everybody's welcome to come. The Ariel, Harold, myself and supposed to Chief Opsley are going up on the 18th and 19th to look at, final viewing of it prior to then the final assembly. And probably three to three and a half weeks after that, that will be...
What time is it tomorrow?
Pardon me?
What time is tomorrow?
Seven o'clock tomorrow.
At Station Two.
Yes, got it.
I will start the nothing trend again.
All right. All right, we can just go with closed session.
Hold on, my glasses, sorry, can't see.
Let's see, the city, are we out here? All right. Vote to close part of this meeting pursuant to section 610.021 and the revised status of Missouri relating to legal action causes of actions or litigation involving the city or any confidential or privileged communication between the city and representatives and its attorneys, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate where public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid for the transaction, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public government body where personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, documents of any documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected, individually identifiable personal records performing ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm telling you, one hour you're left.
Okay. We did it.
That's the man I ever had.
That's it. I always said that it lasts more than hours, not a evening, it's a BS session.
And a lot of people aren't going to remember what was said if it gets...
That's right.
Some of it's going, you and I need to... That west side, mine, your need to make some changes there, you know what I'm saying?
I haven't said it in a little bit.
Well, I know you need some, so thank you.